Okay. We're all set, Tom?
Hey, I'd like to call the town council meeting for North Branford to order at 7:00 PM, Tuesday, April 14th. You pull to the flag. Which allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So can I get a, like your roll call, Michelle?
Absolutely. Mayor Vic Leona's absent. Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni? Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Duty?
He there?
He's here, right? Counselor Fuonan?
Here.
Counselor Goad?
Here.
Counselor Paternoster?
Here.
Counselor Policia?
Here.
Thank you. I think Mike might be joining 10 or 15 minutes late.
Okay.
I left a message that he was running some time constraints. So, okay, can I get a, can we get a motion of accepted minutes from the previous meeting?
Second.
Any corrections? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, if I could, before we get into item three, I've got, I've invited Lisa Valenti, Town Clerk, to tonight's meeting. I think she's got some technical difficulties and I'm going to try and, if we could pause for just a moment, I'll try to walk her through it.
Sure.
Ah, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Okay. Yeah. Um, so, Lisa Martin, I'm hosting the meeting. Okay, she's going to try and work on that in the background and we can get back to this while she tries to get logged in.
Okay, your report, Mike.
Yeah, I'm going to try something different today. And also, I'm also looking to see if, yeah, Mike Pascasilla's joined us, so he's helped with some background information, the update on the COVID. We put it, he put a nice slide together. I'm going to try and see if I can pull that up.
Mike, I just sent you an update in the last five minutes. So, I sent an email.
I'm sorry, I can't get to that.
Why don't you have and give us a verbal report, Mike?
Yep, I will jump right to that. It was a nice guy, we'll certainly forward that email to the council, but Mike had put together a graphic for those visual learners. It's a pretty short report, but indicates as of today, we have 25 positive cases within North Branford, two fatalities. And what he had also done in supplying that information was compare us to where Branford and East Haven is in terms of the district, where East Haven is showing 132 positive cases and Branford is showing 110 positive cases. And so, that's it. The cases, obviously, the hospitalizations are what we're looking at and tracking. We're in nearly constant contact with these numbers as they continue to change and Mike is doing a great job supplying us information and statistics as we hold these almost daily meetings with respect to COVID. I can say also that we were fortunate enough to get a delivery of 1,000 surgical masks yesterday that went out to first responders. And I know that Chief Seward is also working on, with Anthony, to get an order in for 12 respirators that came late this afternoon. So we're plugging that in and continue to source whatever location, whatever company that we can for the PPE. And obviously, beyond that sanitizer, hand wipes, we're starting to get low on those items. We continue to place orders where we can and chase down leads for those supplies wherever we can. So, Mike, I'm sorry, I couldn't open the email and I don't know if you wanted to add to that on the, on the statistics for North Branford? Mike, you have to unmute?
Yes, I can. So with the update, just to clarify, first, as I did last time, what I'd like to do very quickly is I'll take you through US Connecticut and locally. So with the United States is 5,900, sorry, 594,206 cases, there's 25,402 fatalities. In Connecticut, we have a total of 13,989 positive cases currently. As of tonight, we have 1,779 people in Connecticut in the hospital. And to date, we have 671 fatalities in Connecticut. The recent data, and the data is constantly changing, but the latest statistics as of an hour ago, we have 26 cases in, positive cases in North Branford. In East Haven, we have 141, and in Branford, we have 115. And in addition, we have a total of 28 fatalities, two of which in Branford, and a breakdown between Branford and North Branford, 16 in North Branford, 10 in North Branford. So that, that's an update as far as where we stand at the world in US Connecticut data.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
That's it for the update, Tom?
Okay, thank you. Next is citizen statements and petitions and correspondence?
Yeah, I don't have the file, but I believe it was, I think Gina had sent out for the packet, a number of emails that came in for, in support of the building of the high school with one opposed, in terms of the high school project. I think Michelle should also have a copy, the clerk should also have a copy of that as well. I don't think, I don't know that maybe, maybe Michelle can read the name or, well, you all have the packet, so I just didn't want to go through and read that, but they wanted that passed along to the, to the council for tonight's meeting.
Okay. All right.
I think if it's in our packet and part of the minutes, it'll just get published with our minutes so that we can see who they are and I really don't think we have to go through, especially on a Zoom meeting, to read every one of them.
Right, okay, yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Is it acceptable to highlight or am I attaching them as?
I would attach, I would just attach them as part of the minutes.
Okay.
Resignations and appointments, there's none. So we're into new business. Review and approve RFP number 10, 2019, 2020, climate-controlled storage container, a bid summary memo?
Right, yeah, so there's just, it was just one respondent to that RFP and it was Eagle Leasing Company with a bid of 31,856. So there's not much more to it than that, other than, you know, I believe that we had thought that we'd allocated or thought it would estimate it to be closer to 50 with everything done. So, I mean, I certainly would defer to the chief and, and we did speak about it a little bit earlier, well, yesterday actually, and I think that's well within the, in the ballpark. But of course, you know, there's some, Fran's got some work to do in terms of prep work, but I, I think, unless I'm wrong, I think that number's going to work and I don't see anything within the packet that's deficient for that response.
Any, any comment? Kev, do you have any, anything to add to that?
I think he's right, we're well within the ballpark. We thought it was going to cost about 35 for the container, extra for the, now about 1,500 for the site work. So I think we're, we're within the range.
I'd like to make a motion to award RFP number 10, 2019, 20, to Eagle Leasing for the purchase of a.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this is Walter Goad. You hearing me?
Yep.
Um, I was, something I was thinking about, forgetting that storage container, which sounds like it's going to do the job, I, this just came to my mind a couple days ago. What if we got one of those trailers where the, where the police might actually have like an office and a bathroom in there and a storage, like especially with the virus going around, would that help having a little bit of storage space in there? Would it be, I don't know, I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in, but we'd be doing basically the same thing instead of just putting a box on the ground there. You could actually have one of those trailers that they set up for construction sites, which would probably be like the same size and you might be able to have both if you needed, I don't know, a temporary office and storage versus just a steel can?
No, we need the, we need the whole can, just for the files.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to throw that in.
No, it's a good idea, but it's, it's 40 feet, it's going to be 40 feet of shelves and files. There's going to be no room for anything else.
All right. I agree with Victor that, we've looked at this, Dave Colombo, we've been doing business with Eagle for quite some times, so they will have a little bit of an office area in the very front of this. So if they have to open up storage boxes, they'll have a place that they can place a computer and have a little work area as well as, but 90% of that's going to be storage and shelving that's getting built into this unit. Okay. Thank you.
Dave, that cost of 31 includes the shelving and everything?
Yes, yeah. Built out just the way we want, climate-controlled, insulated with, with all the shelving in it. We've done, we've done, we use these at our rail yards and we use them at scale houses, but they, Eagle's probably been one of the best in the tri-state area. We tried one other guy, didn't work. It was terrible. These guys build it to suit and very well done. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions?
I don't think Mike Duty's on yet, Michelle.
I think he's on, but I think he's muted or can't hear the audio or something.
Tom said he was going to be late.
Because if you look under participants?
Right, he's there, but I think Tom said he was going to be late.
Okay.
I'm not sure that he's here yet.
Okay, so the lights are on, but no one's home?
Yeah, they, I mean, they could have, you know, maybe his family signed him on just so it'd be ready when he walks in the door. Because he did say he'd be late. Okay, so, discussion and possible action on budget scheduling, budget referendum?
Yeah, and what, we have a couple of extra guests. Obviously, I mentioned at the beginning, Lisa Valenti is now connected, is on, the registrars are here as well. Mike Pascasilla, the chiefs are on as well. I hope you all got the additional information sort of outlined from Lisa on the budget referendum questions or motions, if you will, for this. You know, we've been, we've been meeting to try and work on a plan and plans for what appears to be the consensus of the council to move in a direction to have participation for this budget referendum. So, you know, outside of doing or invoking the executive order and not having a vote, in order to, to do that, we've looked at assessing the risks and the logistics planning involved. So the option one that we had looked at and first talked about was the drive-through vote and evaluating that is, you know, problematic with respect to the first obvious, which is that it's weather, weather dependent, if you will. The weather has a lot to do with what may happen in terms of that operation, but then also from equipment in terms of cones and signage and the setup, the traffic configuration, traffic control personnel and PPE, which is certainly necessary in terms of masks and gloves and there would certainly be, with a low supply, a diversion from our first responders. So that particular option really doesn't pan out and I think there is a better option than, than that and that is option two, in which, in which the clerk and registrar have also been involved in trying to work this out and that would be the mail-in ballot. So I think, just going back, I think we, I think you'll find we, we should probably take the drive-through option off the, off the table and focus, if you, if you're concentrated on the participation, the, the mail-in opportunities, but it's not without problems as well. Paper and supplies, timing, getting ballots, enough ballots, getting envelopes, all dependent on whether or not the printer and can get that out and deliver in time. But the process also for educating the residents is, is going to be steep. It's a two-step process. It's going to take some, some time and the bottleneck is the clerk's office and in terms of mail and processing the mail. We still have to keep them safe, so we still have to use, see if we can get additional supplies again for gloves and masks to do that. And one of the things that, that came up in the planning stages earlier today was talking about whether or not the council would entertain in lieu of a mail-in, some type of electronic survey, which would be the safest outside of just a vote by the council. A survey like Survey Monkey to blast out in lieu of a mail-in that you would still, it would be non-binding, but it would still get the input that you're looking for from, from residents. And so, we were, you know, looking at that and of course, that came up late this afternoon, so not a lot of time to chase that down with capabilities through a platform like Survey Monkey. There could be another platform, another company that might work as well or better. I'm just not aware of one. So I've asked the clerk Lisa to be on and the registrars to be on to sort of give you the, the issues and the layout and the timing and maybe I can ask Lisa to just comment from, from their perspective and the registrars and just how complicated this process is going to be. Not that it can't be done, but there are some hurdles.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I didn't, I'm trying to unmute down here. Well, yeah, basically, what we would be employing is a paper ballot utilizing the absentee ballot process. And the absentee ballot process, for those who have not used it before, it is a two-step process. The voter would need to request a ballot and you do that with an application. We do have a link to the Secretary of State's Office website that they could download the absentee ballot application from their home or they could call us in if they didn't have a computer, we could mail the application. We need to have the original signed application back in my office and then we would mail the ballot. Now, the problem is the timing of the ballots. That's why you'll notice I gave you a motion there to maybe, instead of having the budget referendum on May 19th, to kick it out a week because what happens is our question for a budget referendum is determined after you set the budget. So it, it has, it puts in the bottom line of the grand, you know, of the budget and the mill rate. So that cannot be established until April 23rd. The printer did ask me if we could do that earlier, but I know with your budget timeline now and doing the Zoom meetings, that's probably difficult. So if we were to, if you were to set that question on April 23rd, I could send that question to the printer the morning of April 24th and he could possibly, he would rush it and get me the ballots by April 28th. So if we hold the budget referendum on May 26th, we would have to start issuing the ballots three weeks prior to that, which would be May 5th. That's why I asked you to kick it back a week because if you kept it at May 19th, I'd have to issue the ballots on May 28th barring that they were delivered to me on May 28th. I'm not, I'm not sure how deep Mike, Michael Paulus, you want me to go into the issuing of the ballots. That's basically the timeline why I made that suggestion.
Yeah, no, I think the more information to help us through the process, the better. And I guess that you also, the suggestion to, you know, from 10 to 6 as well, you know, where the?
Okay, that came up with another, in another discussion since, you know, we're changing the budget process to allow the public to vote, to cast a vote, and since it's a mail-in process and normally our budget referendum would be held, say, 12 to 8, we had asked the town attorney if the council could move that possibly from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM and that was to see if we could also, in conjunction with having people mail in the ballots, if we could do some sort of drop box. And doing that, it would have to be located outside of town hall during our business hours, like 8:30 to 4:30, I would suggest once a week at least because I'd have to empty it and it would have to be, it's something mobile that would have to be brought inside town hall. If it's outside of town hall to avoid contact, there is a camera, well, there was a camera on the exterior wall right outside of the main door where you, where you enter town hall. I guess it was broken. They do have a replacement, so we have to get that camera up to make sure it's on there and we need to make sure that there's a lock on the bottom of it and it would look similar to a mailbox. It's basically, if we could borrow that and place it outside of town hall to give, to give the voters an extra way of getting the ballot back if they didn't want to mail it and put it in their, you know, they could put it in their mailbox and their postman could take it. They would need a stamp. In a normal situation, in a normal election, you would be able to bring it back to my office, but we, we're not, we're trying to keep everyone safe and social distancing, so I have to worry about people coming into town hall. We haven't let anyone into town hall, or very few people. So that was that scenario. My, my suggestion would be to at least do it once a week throughout this four-week process or three-week process. And then if you move the, the budget refer, moving the hours would enable our voters to be there during daylight hours. It would be safer for them if they wanted to drop it off, say, if they wanted to wait until, you know, May 26th, which they don't have to, the sooner the better for us to process them. At least it would be daylight hours because those stairs there, you know, I just want to make sure it's daylight for the voter's safety. That's what that suggestion was about. It's, it's purely up to the council.
So my, my question is, do we have to decide now before the budget is set whether we want to have a referendum or not, or can we wait until?
You can wait.
Until next week when we finalize the budget and if we, if we end up with a no-mill increase, that it's, the, the mill rate's the same, we can have a discussion and decide if we want to go ahead with the referendum or not. Is that possible?
That is possible as long as you don't go beyond that, that April 23rd date with giving me a question, because that's the type, that's, that's the brush to get the ballots. Absolutely. You can.
Can I also, Lisa, could I also ask, what about an electronic vote? What would, what's your feeling about that?
It's not allowed.
Oh, it's not allowed?
It's not allowed and no excuse absentee ballot is not allowed yet under our state law. What we've been discussing with, because I'm, be running this in conjunction with the presidential primaries, what the Secretary of State's Office is trying, is doing with the executive, executive orders with the governor is to allow the voters the choice of not going to the polls on primary day and to use an absentee ballot. They're, they're extending the, you know, they're, but that's purely for the presidential primaries. They keep stressing that with us. It has nothing to do with other voting and they're thinking about maybe, we may be in this situation in November, we don't know, but in order to have a no-excuse voting under law or in Connecticut anyway, they have to change our state constitution. So, and that's where she is going toward, but right now, we're just trying, it's, it's all due to, due to this pandemic. We're in different times and they're trying to keep everyone as safe as possible. But yes, waiting until the 23rd and deciding because, you know, you can get public input. If it's a zero, you can invoke the governor's executive order, as many of the towns around us have done, to keep everyone safe. And it's, and it's, and you know, we can stress to the public, this is strictly to keep everyone safe, it's not to take control of anything. I mean, who thought we'd see this in our lifetime and I pray we never see it again.
Does any other council member have an opinion or about waiting to decide until we are done with the budget?
Rose, it's Ron. I, I don't have a problem with that as long as the, as long as all the timeframes work out, I don't have a problem with it.
I agree. If we, if we, if we have the time, then we can wait. Anything else, Mike?
No, I think that's, I think that's it. We can certainly sit on that for next week. And again, I, just to clarify, I wouldn't confuse anyone saying electronic survey, not, you know, non-binding, not, I wish we could vote electronically, but obviously Lisa, you know, and registrars will tell you that unfortunately that's, that's not legal within Connecticut. I'm not sure it's legal in any state yet, but you know, we'll do the best we can and hold off and hopefully have more information on, well, this time next week.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay. So now we're to item 6C, public work budget presentation?
Yep, and I'm going to try and move things around here and get the presentation for Fran loaded up.
Michael, so none of the motions that were sent, budget referendum motions, need to be done at this time to rescind the motion for the drive-through referendum, rescind the motion to hold the budget referendum, et cetera?
Right, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Whoops. Okay. Fran, can, can you see?
I can see you.
Can you see, can you see the screen?
No.
Can everybody else see the screen?
No.
No, I saw briefly.
We did, yeah, for a second.
Okay, hold on.
There you go, Mike.
Yep.
There you go.
I see it.
Got it.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay, Fran.
All right, so good evening, everybody. This is different than what I'm used to doing, so you're going to bear with me. Obviously, you know that when I prepared this budget, it was obviously before we had this virus come through, so this is what I proposed to Mike and, you know, I'll show you the ins and outs of it, pretty much. I do want to thank Chief Hower to help me with this because I didn't do that, believe me. First for everything, though. So, yeah, I mean, just the increase, I understand how this whole works, so it shows what my budget was in 1920, my request for 2021. After I had a meeting with the town manager, we made a few cuts and then it just shows the percentage of what my increase was, what the increase, what the cut was. So going to the first line, 101, that's the, that's the full-time employee, we put in the superintendent. We had the question, we tried to push it off for half a year, do a half, half-year, you know, I'll see how that works or not. Pretty much, the other, the other increase on here, everything else, pretty much the same. There's another increase for part-time. That's the part-time mechanic for 16 hours a week, two days. It shows zero in last year because we hired him when I had a mechanic down for an extended period of time. So we use him as a fill-in mechanic. He comes in two days a week, helps us out with the PD stuff and all miscellaneous stuff. General state the same. The pension, social security, that all changed with the, with the superintendent. The same thing with the uniform and clothing. The, I lost my spot here, I'm sorry. Agricultural supplies, that's just a, an increase in, in just cost. One sec. Yeah, that was just increases in materials, that one there. The uniform and clothing is, I'm sorry, jump back. Construction materials, that is pretty much the same. The food's the same, heating fuel, the heating, the motor fuel lubricants is, it's down, that's because of the, some of the savings in the fuel. Mike, that screen for me? The, you know, the telephone's the same thing, slight increase, oh, oh, lost you, Mike.
Sorry about that, yep.
There you are. Equipment maintenance is the same. Facilities maintenance was up because of, bear with me, I'm going through paper at the same time. Where was I, equipment maintenance?
Facilities maintenance.
Facilities maintenance, thank you.
It's up $4,700.
Yeah, the...
Couch?
No. On the bed? It's showing up, but the, it's all the same stuff. There had to be a... I think there was an increase with the fire extinguisher inspections and the irrigation repairs. Equipment rental, that stays the same. Uniform allowance, that's contractual. The other contractual is the, is the, as far as, we cut out, I asked for GPS trucks and we cut that out. That was $6,000. And the tree cutting, we left at 40, which is, could be an impact in this year's budget, our tree cutting. We're at probably as of today, I only give a firm number, but it's about, it's running about 140,000 or 150,000, which actually isn't as bad as it sounds for what we... That's all, how about that? What's the next page, Mike?
Your overview page?
Yep. I'm just missing the last one, but that's the overview of the whole budget, the way that we just said it. So there's a couple of cuts in there. I'm sure there's some questions. You can fire questions off to me now if you want.
So is the town man, in the town manager, in the town manager, is, is the superintendent already cut out of that?
We cut half, half out.
So there's still a half a year?
Half a year, yep.
Yeah, it was going to start the January 1st, is what we decided.
Fran, it's Ron. Can you just, for those of us that are new and haven't heard about this position before, could you just tell us a little bit about the need for that position and what that position would do?
Well, there's no, we've, we've been talking about this for probably around five years, Ron. There's no, there's no second in command as far as the non-union person. So basically, you know, that would be the guy that would be running the day-to-day kind of show as it, as it normally works. And then, and then have, it's a non-union position. Give somebody teeth to, if you want to discipline or reprimand or whatever you want to say and run in the, you know, running the jobs, some, some other eyes out there. You got to remember, we got how many divisions going on now. So even though there's lead people that do the day-to-day actual work, you know, there's, there's no, they have no authority to, if you want to say, discipline. Any other questions on the budget part?
What, what did you say about the trees? You won't be able to cut, cut down as many trees or...
No, no, we, I left the trees at the 40,000 mark and 20,000 for grinding. You know, we're, we're getting to a, we're doing a lot better now, but the, you know, we've been running, that count's run over again this year, 100,000 over.
How are you doing, how are you doing with ash trees? Have you been able to get most of them down by now?
Well, we got a lot of them down, yeah. We didn't get them all down, but there's still stuff out there, but it's getting a lot better. We'll find out when the leaves come out. People will be calling like crazy, I'm sure, but we are, we are, I think it's getting better. We're not getting three, four calls a day on trees.
Fran, what, what line is that in?
Other contractual?
320?
Yep.
Hey, Fran?
Yeah?
Your increases in your 311 account were overhead door repairs and irrigation repairs. Total like $4,500.
Yeah. And irrigation repairs were heavy last year. You know, the systems are getting old. I mean, the one in the, at the garage is, is probably 38, 39 years old now, so. Thank you, Michael. I have paper spread all over the floor and I'm lost.
Franny, in this year's budget?
Yep.
Do you know about how much extra you have left because of the salt and not being a big storm year?
Yep, one second. These are not, these are not, these are not firm numbers. I'm going to give you estimates. I'm not going to say that this is...
That's fine.
There are, like, I have to make up the money for the trees.
Yep, well, that's what I was...
But honestly, in, in the salt range, we haven't, I think I'm going to fill the barn a little bit more, but we're at like 140, about 140-some thousand in, in the plus.
So if, so we have roughly 100 to make up on the trees? And to fill the, and to fill the salt barn, what do you consider that to be?
We probably, we, we probably could get maybe two or maybe 400 ton in there, which is about, I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head, Rose, but it's about 14,000 probably for 100 ton.
Okay.
We spent 50, we spent 60,000 this year just in salt film and the barn is, is more than three-quarters full.
Fran, I got a quick question for you.
Yes?
In other contractual, snow plowing, you have $10,000?
Yeah.
Is that outside contract or is that what?
Yeah. That's if we, if we need them. We didn't, we haven't used them in a couple of, but it usually goes more than that if it's something big.
Yep, I got it. Thank you.
Yeah?
So because we didn't have as many plowable storms this year, are we going to be over on our estimate for extra wages because of overtime for snow plowing? Will there be money left over there?
We're, we're at, and again, don't hold me to the numbers right to the penny here, but...
Estimates are good.
We budgeted 129.45, which is our average that we do with the 12 storms.
Yep.
We spent 22, I'm sorry, that was wrong, that was diesel, I'm sorry. We spent 63.2 with all overtime, not just winter. So we, there's a savings of around 16.5, about. That's overtime, Rose, that's not, that's, including snow and...
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, Rose, back up. I'm reading a diesel line, I got too many things going on. It's savings about $66,000.
Okay.
For overtime.
Right, okay.
Savings.
Yep.
I was, I was, I was wondering about that arithmetic, Fran.
I'm sorry, I, I went up, I got a, I got my tablet on my lap and all the paper at my feet. The tree, the trees, we spent about 113,000 on trees.
And we had 40,000 budgeted in this year's?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're not over, remember, the year's not over yet either, so things could change a little bit.
Okay.
So between the liquid, I got to decide if we're going to buy liquid. There's $20,000 left over that and 140 for the salt. So I got to, I got to just, I was kind of holding off.
Okay.
Hey, Fran, it's Mike.
Roll it over.
Fran, on the tree trimming, any, any chance that you guys are going to help out with another round that could help us offload some of that tree trimming?
Well...
Or is that on...
It's so widespread, Mike, not really. While he for electrics is going to start cutting.
Okay.
In another month. So that can help a little bit. That's mostly pruning stuff.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, the tree, between the ash, the, it's just phenomenal. And then you have the white oaks that died from the, the mobs.
Right.
Crazy.
Yeah, I think what we're going to have to do, just based on those numbers, is, is look at, see, maybe, maybe some of that municipal grant money that comes in could be eligible for that. I don't think we've, we've tried that in the past, but it could be an option.
The problem with some of that grant money, which we'll try it, but there's, there's a lot of strings attached to it about where the wood, the wood's ground, you know, it's a real, we don't always, we don't always meet the criteria.
Right.
Did you want to, did you want to, did you have the capital stuff, Mike?
No, unless, I think we can probably hold off unless the council wanted to get into that. I don't have the, I don't have the sheets to share.
All right. That's fine.
Hey, Fran?
Yes?
So, I know the year's not over yet, but so you're, you're in the, you're in the, in the, in the plus, about 226K based on liquid, salt and plowing. I know you have, probably going to have some expenses, but I mean, that is a good position to be in.
Yeah, it is. Doesn't happen often.
Yeah.
So all those numbers, I... She waited, the, the, so all those numbers obviously are based on averages, Tom. That, that's how we usually figure out the storms. So we kinda keep that steady number in there. So like, you know, like, I'm not gonna cut the overtime this year because I saved money this year. Because next, you know, next year's gonna bring, but we base it on twelve or fourteen storms a year. And that, that's just the snow. Then I gotta add in all the other, uh, whatever kind of storm may happen, a hurricane or whatever. That all falls under the same category.
Fran, what's the le, Fran, what's the level in your salt barn now? Halfway?
I, I'm like three quarters right now.
So you gotta, you gotta put another quarter of salt in there? For next year, you gotta put another quarter of salt in there?
I, I, I could, I could, I could just hold up.
Usually buy it at the end of the season, right?
Yes, I do.
So you're all starting the next year?
Yeah, there's been some years we didn't do that because we just didn't have the money, but I'd like to do, I'd like to get the liquid because I'm down on liquid. This, this salt, I, I think if I bought, um, probably two hundred ton, I'd be really, you know, I'm gonna be piling it up, which is not a bad idea to do, because it's only gonna, it's probably gonna go up a little bit for next year.
Right. So that's why I said you can't, you can't, you can't count on that two twenty-five or two fifty, whatever, until you fill up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what, what, with, what, right now, Franny has roughly two hundred and twenty-five thousand in his budget, so if we can take care of his overage on the trees so that we don't have to go into the general fund, into the undesigned fund balance or contingency, and if he can fill the salt, whether it's salt or the liquid or a combination, he should have enough money in this year's budget-
Right.
To do that.
It's about twenty thousand for two hundred ton.
So, so he should have enough money and then we should still have some left over, um, from there.
How much you need for liquid, Fran?
Um, uh, hold on one sec.
So you got twenty thousand for?
Probably, probably about the two uh, about probably around five or six thousand, I think.
So there's twenty-six thousand.
Yeah. I, I'm just-
Then you're, then you're in good shape and the, the rest, hopefully, um, we could, uh, borrow.
Said, you got, I gotta see how the, um, the, um, equipment maintenance, we should be decent. And then, uh, obviously the fuel, there's a little savings in my fuel.
The way that prices are, the way that prices are dropping, we should be quite a-
Yeah, but we're locked in on some of them, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, we're probably locked in from last year.
Yeah, we're locked in, unfortunately, right before, right before the, the fall.
Well, Mike, for instance, diesel-
Fall in prices. Yeah, go ahead.
Diesel, I'm, I, I gotta, as of, uh, a week ago, I'm, I'm in the plus by sixteen thousand. So we gotta go from now till, uh, July first. We'll be burning fuel for the, the equipment, but I mean, as far as the trucks all going.
So let me ask this question. We're locked in for fuel, but we can't, we can't buy fuel from anybody else?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to check that and, and we, we did, we did lock in that too long ago, and that was before the, uh, COVID crisis, before the, uh, oil crisis and before the, uh, prices dropped precipitously, so uh, we did, we did realize some savings, but not, not like you would if you were looking to shop it out right now.
The other issue we're gonna have is like we had in the past with the school buses. Because i- if we, if they had to buy a certain amount of oil, we're gonna have, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna have to happen one year before. I, I don't, I don't know, I can't remember how their contract was, but we ended up getting fuel from them, from them. Because we had, we had to store it. They charge it for that.
Right. How long you locked, how long we locked in for it?
Well, if they just signed it, it's gotta be three years.
Yeah, I, I'll check that, but I think it's, it's probably a year, and I, I gotta check the quantities, uh, because I think there's certain, uh, quantities that were taken.
The gas is at one point and the, the diesel's a different time.
I'd like to look at that contract too and just see if there's any way we could buy around it.
Well, at, at least buy around it for now if we can and still meet our quota of what we have to.
I will say, um, not to, not to butt into you guys, Dave Palumbo, uh, to your point, Mike, duty. Uh, we locked in at gas right now at about a dollar forty-nine. Uh, and we're not even locked in, but, uh, and diesel, we just bought today for about a dollar eighty-three.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. We're barely locked in for two fifty or two seventy.
Right, so Mike Paulus, if you need a, a contact, uh, I can set you up with Santa Fuel, you know, and try to maybe go roundabouts to maybe meet the quotas, or hook you up with our guy. Because we're, we're, you know, we're looking at it every day, and today we just bought it for about a dollar eighty, about a dollar eighty-three nine, dollar eighty-four.
But the other problem, the other problem we got is if we got that extra fuel from the buses that, if, if, if that's the same contract, I don't know, but happened in the years before where we had all that extra fuel and then we had to pay to store it.
Yeah, we gotta find that out.
You know, we went around filling tanks up all over the place.
Mike, can you reach out to, um, the superintendent of schools and just find out about this bus contract and what the situation is with the fuel?
Absolutely, yep.
Because Fran, I think if that's the case, you got more fuel than you could even store.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that is, that was the problem that year. I can't remember what year it was, but I remember it.
Well, we're certainly not talking three months of fuel.
No. No.
That's why, that's why that, maybe those contracts, county attorney should look at quick.
Yeah, you know, the other thing too is the high schools got a whole tank of oil on the ground. We gotta get out.
Right.
Because that tank has gotta come out of the ground over there, and that's full.
It's full from last year or they just filled it?
No, since they, uh, they, you know, they went over to gas.
Right.
And that tank is scheduled to get out, come out of the ground. I guess it made its date, I think. I gotta talk to Bill Choney tomorrow, but I remember him talking to me about it.
Well, why didn't they just run the oil out and then switch to gas so that the tank was pretty much empty? I know it's a little hard to do that now because school's not in session, but
Can't answer that.
I mean, to empty, to have to pump it out and, and everything else, but I guess that's their problem. So I have a question for Anthony Esposito. Is he on?
I believe he is.
So Anthony, so if, if Franny has, you know, seventy-five thousand, after we do everything, take care of the trees and buy salt and liquid and everything else, if he has seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars left in his operating budget, can we reallocate that this year to take care of some of his capital?
Uh, yeah, you could make an operating transfer out to the current year's capital, uh, capital reserve. You could take whatever the money and, and put it out there. That would help him in next year's budget. Um, you could take, yeah, definitely transfer the savings out. It'd be an operating transfer, go before you guys for the appropriation transfer from his department down to the operating transfer out department. Now, we can kick it out to the reserve, certainly.
Okay, because I was looking at the capital, the revised capital budget that was sent to us, and so I noticed in the budget funds, which we've worked very hard the last number of years to get that up to approximately one point two million, roughly a mil. Um, I know that there's an increase in the budget for next year of approximately two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars because last year we were only at a million twenty-two, but this year I see that it's increased. So if, so in order to keep that at last year's level, so that there's no mil rate increase, we would have to cut approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from there. So if we could take care of some of that capital with savings in the accounts from this year, then I think that would be worthwhile rather than just cutting it totally. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm asking to see if we could do that.
Yeah, certainly. And, and just for the nineteen-twenty budget, the amount we took out of, of the general fund operating was one million, one sixty-two. Was the amount that came out of, uh, that budget funds column. The one million twenty-two you're referring to is a separate fund balance appropriation. Not, we haven't even talked about that at all yet. The, the, the one, the one mil rate is that first column.
Right.
And that was like last year was a million, one sixty-two, three hundred.
Oh, okay. All right.
So year over year, it's only up a hundred thousand roughly.
Okay.
So Mike, are you, you gonna have the attorney look at the contract, see if there's any, any wiggle room?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, we'll dig that out. Look at those numbers, look at quantities, look at, uh, the timing. See if there's any type of, uh, opportunity, and, and thank you, Dave Palumbo. Uh, certainly reach out if we, we're looking at. I'll kick it around with, uh, Vin, uh, and we'll see what we can do there.
And then also, um, have the town attorney just look at that bus contract, get, see if you can get a copy of that from the superintendent?
Yeah.
You can see once where we sit on the diesel.
Our, our diesel fuel price now is a dollar eighty-five for next year.
Is that what was locked into? Was one eighty-five?
That's what I have in my budget book from, um, from Michelle, I believe. A dollar eighty-five for fuel and two twenty for, uh, gasoline. That's what was budgeted per gallon.
The two twenty probably could be revised, uh.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know what the contract's read, but that's what we got.
That's the part I hate about locking in.
Yeah.
Six months ahead of when we need it.
Yeah.
Gas to the pump is about, to the, to the, to the station is about a dollar, just under a dollar twenty-seven.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll have to look at that contract. I, again, I don't know. I, I just know that, I mean, actually the whole town, the police and everything. Police, fire.
Anything else?
Not from me.
Any, any other questions for, uh, Fran? Thanks, Fran.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Franny.
We'll talk about it next week. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Fran.
Thank you.
Next up?
Next up is police department. I'm gonna load, I'm gonna load their presentation.
Okay.
Uh, hang on a second, Mike. I think, uh, the chairman, PD Andrea, wanted to, uh, say something first.
Okay.
You wanna load it up or you want me to talk first?
Go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank the town council and the town manager for the measures they are taking to keep the town businesses moving the best they can during these unusual times. The cooperation between the town departments is something I haven't ever seen before. I also like to thank all the first responders who have worked diligently during this pandemic, literally placing their personal safety on the line every time they respond to a service call. Also, I would like to thank the fire department, which I believe is company one, for driving around on Easter with the lights on and a bunny, giving morale and cheering up the kids in our town. The police, fire and EMS and public works is clearly a necessity, and as demonstrated, they all stepped up to the plate. Now it is time to demo, dramatically not cut the safety of the budget. I think we all know that this is gonna go, this is not a permanent situation and is going to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you, Victor. Uh, I don't know. I think we have a couple other commissioners on. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to say anything.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm set. I, I wanna just thank everybody for the trying times we are going through. This is very unusual for all of us. Hopefully this will pass soon, but I, I do believe that the crisis we are in shouldn't affect our due diligence that we've worked on so hard, all of us, for the measures we wanna see in the future for the PD and the future of the PD. So, um, and, and it's, you guys are inundated, I'm sure, every day with this. Uh, I've never been on so many conference calls and Zoom meetings in the last two weeks that I've been in my life, so um, I'd like to see us move forward in, in the directions for this department that we've all worked on so hard at the council levels, the past council levels, public safety, and the first responders are the most important. And we're seeing that firsthand every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Mike, yeah, if you go ahead and load it up, that would be good.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and get back to that. Um,
Hey, Mike, before you load that up, Northern Tools, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Could everybody hear me?
Yep.
Northern Tools has gloves and masks in stock. They just received them this morning, so if anybody wants to order stuff, you can get online and hopefully they're still there. There's, they got a shipment, a year supply of, uh, latex gloves and N ninety-five masks.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, um, we have three budgets to go over tonight. First, I'll release followed by, uh, communications and then wrap it up with, uh, capital improvements. So we're good?
Sorry, Kevin, are, are, am I on the right page for you?
No, you're good. You're good, thank you. So as you'll see, the, uh, format is pretty similar to, uh, what Franny did on his presentation, uh, with showing the nineteen-twenty budget. The, uh, twenty-twenty-one proposed, the percent change in the, uh, the dollar amount. As you'll see, there's some, uh, some increases as well as some decreases, as well as, uh, uh, some flat line items. Uh, if you go to the next page, Mike, this is because we have so many, uh, line items, I broke it up into two screens so that you could see it, and then we'll break it out, um, after the, uh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, sorry, it's not working for me. Uh, not sure what happened. All right, is that it?
That's the one.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a lag. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay. So, uh, again, another overview of the second half of the budget. You could see, uh, the one that stands out is the three eleven, the facilities and maintenance. Uh, we decided to keep that flat, um, because we're still unsure of what direction we're going in with, with a new building. Um, I can tell you that, uh, yesterday we discovered a couple leaks in the, uh, in the roof. Um, they went up in the attic today and saw some damaged, uh, uh, plywood, so I, I'm not sure if we're gonna need a new roof. I don't know if it's worth putting money into or not, uh, whether or not a patch could, uh, could fix that as a temporary to, to hold us over. So if you go to the next page, Mike.
Chief, I think before you go on, chief, and, and looking at the pictures, uh, that's gonna, unless we're gonna do something soon, we're gonna have to address that, uh, before we start having real problems with mold buildup. uh, that's gonna, unless we're gonna do something soon, we're gonna have to address that, uh, before we start having real problems with mold buildup. If there already isn't up there now.
All right, so, so what I did was in this screen, I, I, I broke it out. Uh, we'll start out with the increases. Um, I broke it out from the, uh, highest dollar amount to the, to the lowest dollar amount. It's impacted most, uh, as far as dollar amount is, is concerned, is the, uh, pension security line item. Um, these are basically based on salary and, and, and law. Um, the full-time, uh, the one-on-one account, uh, increases are driven by contractual increases. Um, we also had talked about the addition of a records slash evidence clerk. Next line item is overtime, and that is also reflective of, uh, contractual salary increases. The next line item is other contractual. Um, basically, the increases are due to, uh, increases in the facility cleaning. The addition of the in-car cameras that they put in a year ago, it has a service contract. Um, Microsoft Office three sixty-five licensing and increases in regional SWAT and traffic investigations. The, uh, three thirteen, the uniform allowance line item, uh, the increase was primarily because we have, uh, six expired bulletproof vests that need to be replaced as a result of, uh, OSHA requirements. If you change the, uh, screen, Mike? Okay. The, uh, two oh two account, uh, the increases in the, uh, two, two account was, uh, they hadn't budgeted for oxygen tank refills and we need to replace medical bags. The three twelve equipment rental, uh, went up slightly, uh, due to oxygen tank rentals. The three oh one, the telephone account, uh, again, a small increase, and that's just to adjustment in price, uh, increases. And the three oh three, the binding, uh, for some reason, it was left out of last year's budget inadvertently, uh, so we put the five hundred dollars back in into this year's budget. If you move on to the next screen, please. So these are all the line items that were flat, that stayed the same, no increase, no decrease. And again, the, uh, facilities and maintenance, uh, line item, the three eleven down the bottom is highlighted. Michael, if you move on to the next. So these are decreases, um, a couple modest ones, books and publications, heating fuel went down a, a little bit. Uh, but the contractual, uh, went down, uh, contractual holiday pay went down, uh, significantly. Um, the reason for that is, is that, um, there must have been a mistake in the previous, this current budget that they had allocated fourteen holidays per officer. Um, however, the union contract, uh, allows for thirteen, uh, days per officer, so that, that was adjusted. If you move on to the, the next slide. So a quick overview, the, uh, driving factor to the majority of the increases in line items were a result of, uh, collective bargaining agreement between the town and the union. Uh, if you take out the collective bargaining increases and if you assume that they were flat, uh, really the increase would be, uh, less than a half a percent increase. Uh, so that's, that's the police budget. Do you, do you want me to go through all the budgets or do you wanna ask questions on each particular budget first or?
Does anybody got any questions on the, the budget for the police department, uh, as a whole?
I do. This is Rose.
Go ahead, Rose.
So in your, uh, one-on-one, the full-time account.
Yep.
The increase of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, more than ha, a, a little over half of that is due to the new position, though. It's not a collective bargaining. It's not because of the collective bargaining, it's because you added a position.
The position was added, that was that position that was talked about with the council. In order to get to storage containers and start separating files, he either subbed out a contract or we hired somebody from within. And at that time, the council, uh, the majority agreed that it would be better to hire somebody within than to sub it out and have anything lost or missing. Remember when we had that meeting?
But that, but that, that's a, that's a huge, in, I mean, your salary alone, you're talking seventy-seven plus, plus all the benefits, so you're over a hundred thousand dollars.
No, seventy-seven thousand, there's no benefits in that position. Whoever takes that position.
Well, there's social security, there's, there would be social security, there would be, you know.
But that, that's all encumbered into the seventy-seven thousand.
Well, that's not, that's not how it's listed in our, in, in the budget. It's all under salary. It's just under the one-on-one account at seventy-seven thousand, but then social security's in another line item.
Right. Right, we didn't get that far with it, but it, just a hypothetical situation, somebody wanted the position at sixty thousand dollars, there's seventeen left over for social security, FICA, Medicare, and all that encumbered into that to get that storage container up and running. Without that position, who's gonna get that container and all those files out of the room?
Well, it's, I, I don't know. Uh, in, in our budget book, it's listed, the seventy-seven thousand is just salary.
You're, you're correct, Rose. It, it, the, the spreadsheets that Anthony gives, it, it automatically calculates it into the, uh, social security.
Right, the loaded number.
Yeah.
The seventy-seven is, the seventy-seven is showing up as base salary.
Correct, and that, that, that's just the placeholder right now as far as salary is concerned. Um, basically, we need to move, move forward with this, before we start negotiating with the, with the co, uh, sorry, with the union.
The union.
I, I anticipate, I, I envision, I envision the, the, the salary to be somewhere around sixty-five for the position.
That's gonna be a permanent position?
So, who's, who am I talking to?
Walter, go.
Yeah, Walter, the, part, part of the plan was from the very beginning was to, to get the officers on the road, get copped on the road instead of sitting in the records. I believe we, we had, uh, quite a bit of conversation about this, uh, at a town council meeting at the beginning of March, uh, of the plan, uh, with the, uh, the amount of work that needs to be done just to, in the beginning, just to, to clear it up. So, i- as you recall, I had talked about, uh, this position to be a, uh, multi-purpose position, if you will, um, not only a, a records clerk, but, uh, evidence technician. And, uh, if the person is a hired police officer, possibly could still hold a, uh, police certification, they would be able to also act as a court liaison person. So it would be, it would be more than one position. Sorry, it would be more than, it would be more than one position, um. But to, to get this, you really put the cart before the horse until you start negotiating, you know, until you, uh, have talks with the union. We, we've had preliminary talks, um, but unless, unless we know that we could move forward with this, um, to get this, uh, you, you've seen the, you've seen the message down in the basement, uh, as well as, and you didn't see the evidence room, so, um, just for security reasons, but there is, there is quite a bit of work that needs to be done.
Well, chief, also, uh, and, and to the deputy chief, you're taking this cop, you're putting him on the road, which is also gonna act as another, uh, another, another officer on the road, but yet, when you guys have the guys on vacation, training, you're not gonna be short-staffed by paying a, a certified cop to sit in the records room.
It's, that's pretty much what we're doing now, is we're paying a certified cop to sit in the records.
Correct, which we should have him on the street and have a retired, uh, potential officer in that position.
That's, that's kind of how I envisioned it, yeah.
So Walter, to answer your question, it's basically step two of phase one that we already started for the temporary outside trailer. So that can get organized, and in the event that we either fix the building, renovate the building, or put up a new building, that officer or that position can move to the other building and start organizing. There's, there's quite a bit of files in there, and either we pay for the position on our books to utilize them to our advantage, or we pay subcontractors to move stuff, and if anything's lost or missing, it's on the town's property, so, and on the town's check. And we wait all the odds out, and it's, it's, it, a huge cost savings if we put the position in, then would be to sub it out and find out that we have to have officers standing there to try to move boxes in and out and separate files. Practically, you know, it's just a waste of officers' time and resources during the issues that are already going on on top of the pandemic we gotta deal with. Any other questions?
So, so, yes, Tom, so, so it has to be a, a, a certified police officer to do this?
Yeah, retired certified police officer or somebody that holds a certificate so they can do multi-purpose stuff. Um, and then there's no babysitting involved. They can take the files, they can do the evidence room, um, and leave the officers to what they're supposed to do, you know, their jobs all day long and protect the citizens.
Right, right, Victor, right, exactly. Put a retired cop in there that could step into that position immediately and serve as multi-function use, uh, and put the, and put the certified cop that is sitting there on the road a, and use them for where we need them, as well as, as I said earlier, is when these guys are out on either sick leave, hurt, training, vacation, we have that extra guy in position.
It's not ea, and plus, Tom, just so you know, we would have to pay overtime for the officers to watch or move any of that stuff out of that room right away. Either way, it's gonna cost the town more money than the position.
No, my, my question was.
Yep.
To me, i- it sounds like the, the, um, the, the plan here, or, or what the plan has been is to organize the, the, uh, the files, correct? Get them, get them in a safe spot, a safe, safe, safe area, the secure, organized and so forth. I think that's the, that's the, the, uh, uh, the focus of this position is what I thought. So my, my question was, is it required to have a certified police officer to organize the files and, and secure them? That's, that was really my question.
Yes, because it's, it's all evidence. It's all files, people, social security. You just can't have any random civilian do any of that work. It has to be somebody that's qualified and certified.
Okay, 'cause my next, my next comment would be, I, I hear, you know, that's circulating around that, well, be able to use the person here or there or, or wherever, and I would think that loses the focus of the purpose of, of, um, the organization of the file.
No, what happens is, in an event of like this pandemic, Tom, if we needed to have extra hands, we also have that, that availability and flexibility to move that position in a temporary manner to, to facilitate other things in town.
Or handle, handle some of the court things that, that the chief and deputy chief would assign him to versus sending a patrolman into doing court duties.
Victor or Dave, anybody, or Joe Fawnin.
I can hear you, Joe.
Let me start from the beginning. A retired, uh, policeman. Is that a cost savings because the gentleman's retired, he's gonna work for less? I'm not sure why the emphasis is on somebody that's retired.
Because a, a normal, a normal police officer costs the town a hundred and fifty thousand a year with benefit package and everything?
No doubt.
Okay, so it's, we're saving half the money and still getting somebody with years of experience that's already done this position and has the certifications of a regular officer.
And why is the union gonna go along with that if we can get into that, at this juncture?
Because it helps the officers man their shifts, protects the citizens, and protects the officers more on the street now, so we're actually putting another officer on the street and gives lateral movement in the, the police department.
Okay, but you're confident that this new hire is gonna be at substantially less than what you would have to pay a regular officer?
Yeah, that's why we put in seventy-seven thousand, it's half the pay of a regular officer with benefits and everything.
I think we're gonna come in at less than that. I'm hoping that the chief will, will find somebody that'll be in that sixty-five-ish, um, range, Joe.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem, Joe.
Chief, do you wanna add anything or deputy chief?
Guys, it's Ron Policia. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Ron.
Um, I have two, two things. Uh, one, I can't possibly see the, the union allowing a certified officer to work in the department without being in the union. Um, and two, the person's working the, handling the records does not have to be a certified officer. Uh, if you look at record rooms in different police departments, they are civilians, they are not cer, certified officers.
Right, but they can't go inside the evidence.
I think you got a big hurdle with the union, and, uh, the person does not have to be certified to, to handle the records.
Chief, do you wanna add in or deputy chief?
Well, in that, Ron, ba- basically, you're looking at a retired officer, so he's gonna have, probably gonna have benefits. Correct. The, you're, you're breaking up quite a bit, but the certification, you're correct, with the records, with the certification to clean out the evidence room and certif, and get everything situated, we would like to see somebody in there that's qualified, like an officer, to do lateral stuff in the event of an emergency. There's no sense of having somebody sit in there if we can use the position for multi-purposes. Um, we can't just hire a civilian to go in there and do all the stuff we need to do. Those are old files and records. You know, and evidence, so if that was the, if that was the case, like, just use Clinton. Clinton has a certified officer that takes all the cases and does all that, but if they have an officer and two, and two civilians in there. They do the day-to-day stuff, they take all the information. You're breaking up so bad, I barely could hear you.
I was gonna say, we can't hear him at all.
I can see your face moving, it's like moving very slow.
Nancy Policia, you can use the chat if you wanna type in your questions so that it can be understood.
How are you gonna get around the union? How do you get around the union?
We're working on, we're working on it. It's hard to get around the union without knowing we got the, the money allocated, and then, uh. It's a little bit better. I don't, I don't know if the union is gonna go for it, but without the position being filled and approved by the council, we can't start negotiating.
We need to have it funded, and then the chief or deputy chief will work on that.
But I, I, it, it seems like some of the officers are receptive to it because it puts one more of their officers in the street and it helps everybody else out. Um, um, the morale is back up and, and up to normal. They do have a ton of respect for the chief and the deputy chief. Um, with the position, if it does get approved through negotiations, it's gonna take some time. I'm sure between the town attorney and the union attorney, they can work out a, an arrangement that's beneficial for the police department and the town without minimal cost impact to the town.
Right, I, I think fundamentally, it, the benefit will outweigh the factors of union not going for it. I don't know if you have any question on that, chief or deputy chief?
Just, just to, uh, to fill you in, we've, we've had some preliminary talks with, uh, with the union. They're, they're not opposed. They, they see the, the benefit of not having, uh, an officer in the record room. Um, and as, as you know, you know, negotiations aren't, aren't a one-sided conversation. I'm sure that they're gonna, I'm sure that they're gonna, uh, want something in return for it, what that is at this point in time, I don't know. Uh, you know, there's, there's still a lot of ideas that have, have been kicked around and, and Ron, you're, you're, uh, correct, uh, as far as the, you don't need to, need to be a certified police officer to be in the records room. But as, as I had mentioned, um, we anticipate this to be a, uh, multi-purpose, uh, position. Um, a- as far as the evidence, records room, uh, cleaning that up and maintaining the record, I'm, I'm sorry, the evidence. Um, and, and where we were going at was the benefit of this officer being certified. It may relieve our officers from actually leaving town in, acting a court liaison officer, uh, role, uh, it would be an added benefit, if you will, uh, the, the court liaison officer to be able to transport, uh, you know, non, non-combative prisoners to court also. Does that, does that answer your question?
There's also language in the contract, I have to jump in on you, chief, um, where we have used, um, it's under super newberry officers in the past here in North Cranford, so there's a history of that. And, um, as the chief was saying, transporting prisoners and also serving the, uh, the habeas warrants at the courthouse just gives us more available.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other questions from any council members? Chief, you want to continue on communications then?
Sure.
Let me try and get that screen back.
Okay, if you'll, uh, just go ahead and move on.
Yeah, unfortunately it's not letting me. I hit that lag again.
That's okay.
Is that what you're looking for? Or did I go too far, chief?
Oh, you're, it, I'm, I'm looking at the very beginning, Mike, you're not even in the slideshow presentation.
Oh, okay.
If you go, if you go all the way down to the bottom of the screen next to the, you'll see that slider for the, uh, the size, there's a button down there to the left of it.
Let me just stop that.
Uh, a little, you're too far down.
You're saying, okay, all the way down, yep, on the bottom?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's fine. You see that, you see that, that slider bar there just to the left, there's click and just to the left of it? Yep.
That didn't really do anything, though.
Could you, could you go, you gotta actually have to go further up in the presentation. There's another one of those, like introduction screens for the capital, I mean, for the, uh,
Okay.
You don't, you don't have to put it in the presentation mode if you don't want, if it makes it easier, we'll just, you could just kind of scroll through it and, uh, uh, go a little further up. See that, that slide ten?
Yeah.
Right, slide ten is right there, right, just, there you go.
Did everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, if you don't mind, we'll go in, in this mode, I guess?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, Mike. So basically, uh, the same, the same layout, um, as to not confuse everybody, um, the, we do have some increases, some decreases. If you go to the next slide, Mike. Eleven, oh, okay, there you go. So the ones that are highlighted in yellow are basically driven by the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, you'll see in the one-on-one, the full-time, full-time account, we actually had a, uh, a decrease. The reason for that decrease is, is, uh, when Diane Ramsey retired, she was paid at a higher level than the new dispatcher. So that was a savings of about, um, two thousand dollars. The one-on-two, the part-time, uh, although, although the full-time salary went down, we still have four full-time, uh, dispatchers at the higher rate. So the, uh, dispatch, uh, oh, I'm sorry, go back to that, the part-time. Uh, during this current fiscal year's budget, the, uh, the part-time, uh, dispatcher was, uh, the, the salary was grossly underbudgeted, maybe inadvertently, it, it appears that they only budgeted for, uh, fifty percent of his hours. Um, I've, as you know, I've already made a couple of transfers into that line item. Um, the next line item, uh, overtime, uh, that's reflective of the, uh, the salary increases of the, uh, the remaining full-time, uh, dispatchers. Contractual holiday pay, um, slight increase, not very much. And, uh, believe it or not, pension and social security remained, uh, remained even. If you go to the next line item or next, uh, screen. Okay. This is, uh, our line items that had, uh, no increases or decreases, they stayed flat. Um, if you go to the next slide, it'll show the decreases. Again, a couple of modest, uh, decreases, uh, the, the full-time salary and the telephone account, the three-on-one. Um, that was just based on, uh, the analysis of the, the budget as well as, um, I believe, moving over to the, uh, fiber, uh, for the, um, what do you call those, the receiver sites, uh, are, uh, are helping out with that. If you go to the next, next slide. The equipment maintenance went up, uh, went up slightly, uh, that was due to, I believe, the, uh, it's a three-ten account, yeah, that's the, uh, the radio maintenance common fee wasn't included in this budget as well as, uh, negotiated increases from tactical radio systems, their, uh, their maintenance agreements. The three-twelve account, um, I have this highlighted for a reason, um, significant increase in this and that's, uh, basically due to the Parsonage Hill Tower. Um, last year we paid a total of, uh, eleven thousand nine hundred forty for that tower. I should, not the current fiscal year, but the previous current, uh, the previous fiscal year. Um, this year, the, uh, rates have gone up to twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Um, so essentially we're paying thirty thousand dollars this year for, uh, the rental of the tower. Um, I, based on, uh, uh, the correspondence that I saw, I anticipate a potential increase for this coming fiscal year. Um, not quite sure what that is, but, uh, I put a little bit of, uh, uh, money in there to hopefully cover whatever the, uh, whatever the increase will be. The three-twenty account, the other contractual, we had a slight increase, um, that's primarily due to the Lexics, Lexus Nexus, which is, uh, augments our, uh, next-gen computer-aided dispatch system and record system. Um, and the last increase was other technical equipment and that is to purchase, uh, new dispatcher headsets as well as a, uh, charging base for the, uh, for the current system. So if you, if you go to the, the next slide, um, again, back to the overtime, I have those, those two line items, the part-time had the significant increase as well as the three-twelve, the equipment rental, uh, increase, uh, those kind of stuck out to me as anomalies in this, in this budget. Uh, so if you go to the next slide, Mike. Um, so basically, if, if you left those two line items, uh, where they were without increases the, for the, uh, uh, the tower to be at eleven thousand nine hundred change in, in the, uh, the part-time, uh, part-time s- uh, salary, uh, if we did not add it in, we would have a two percent budget increase or twelve thousand dollars as opposed to the eight percent increase, uh, because of the tower and that, that, uh, miscalculation in the, uh, part-time budget. So that's the, uh, communications budget. Questions?
So why is there such a large increase in Parsonage Hill? Is that Ojankowski?
Yeah.
Yes.
And why, why was there such a huge increase? I thought that was pretty state.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, a placeholder, that's still a pro- a work in progress in trying to negotiate, Vin and myself, uh, working with, um, Joe on that issue. Um, but he, he, he truly believes that it's been out of whack for, for a number of years and that we've had a sweetheart deal. Uh, so he had countered with, uh, um, in, indicating that that's how high it's, it's going to go. Um, but we're, we're still going back and forth with the, with the lease language and, and the numbers, so it hasn't been finalized yet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mike, can you bring us to, uh, capital? Capital? If you just do it the way that you were doing it, Mike, it's fine.
Oh, it's okay.
You don't, you don't have to go into the presentation. Okay. There you go. So the, uh, the capital, capital project cost estimates, um, you know, this, this, Commissioner Petey Andrea said that this, this budget was, uh, put in a couple of months ago and, and we believe that we were on the track for a new police facility. Uh, the seven point five million dollars. Replacement of two police vehicles and, uh, the four point five on the, uh, new radio system is a guestimate. I know that we are still trying to, well, we, we just got the, the, uh, bid returns, uh, request for quotes, um, for the first phase of the, uh, radio system project. Um, that number, uh, that we put in there is primarily based on our knowledge of what neighboring towns have recently spent on, on radio systems. Uh, it might be high, it might be low, um, I'm not really sure, but based on what, what the, uh, neighboring towns have, have paid for radio systems, uh, we, we put that in there as a placeholder, um, based on the, uh, the, the rates are very low now and, you know, we thought that this would be a good time to bond that together and do them at this meeting, police department and the, uh, radio system.
I have a question. When I looked at, when I looked at, you know, the results of your, um, RFPQ, there was such a wide range in what the different people, um, bid. How are you going, how are you going to be able to evaluate which, which, which one to go with? I mean, this, it seems the range, it seems incredible. I mean, who are the experts that are going to be able to really look at that carefully to see that you're getting someone that's going to help you come up with the true system that you need?
Well, the, the, my first, my first quick cursory look at, at some of the responses to it was I'm not sure that they totally read the, the package correctly.
I, I would agree with that, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I, I, you know, um, I believe that some of them up on the higher end, uh, read the packages, doing the complete, uh, project from start to finish. I could be wrong, but that is, is going to be, uh, interviewing the, interviewing the response to the, uh, the RFPQ. You know, and, and we're going to have to do a little bit of legwork, uh, to find out what type of, you know, what work these people have done in the past, check with their, uh, uh, customers to find out, uh, what kind of work they did, if they were happy with them, et cetera.
Marie, did those results go out or do you just then?
No, they, we got them in a, we got them in a file folder.
Okay.
I was just kind of shocked, the difference in pre- in the, in the bids.
So was I, to be quite honest with you. I, I'm, I'm just not sure that they fully gr- understood or grasped what we were looking for, especially the ones on the high end.
Does anybody have any questions as a total on the regular budget, communications or capital? Any questions before we, uh? I guess, I appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It sounds like we've got, and, uh, everybody be safe, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Share your time, guys, be safe, thank you for everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Good talking to you guys.
Thanks, Lou.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item, citizen statements?
I just have, um, if I may, um, Tom, I, I just have one email that came in, uh, that I can see right now at this point from, uh, Dina Falcioli in support of, uh, the, uh, high school project. And, uh, there's a letter I'll circulate, uh, I'll forward out to the council as well.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I have, uh, one other, uh, from a, uh, Diane Artasi, Artaz. Um, also, and I just want to make sure that that's in favor. Yeah, long letter, uh, as well, that I'll send out in, in favor of the high school project as well.
Michael, can you just repeat the names for me?
Sure, I'll, the, the last one I mentioned, Diane, D-I-A-N-E, Art, uh, A-R-T-A-I-Z.
Artes.
Artes, thank you, and.
Artes, Diane Artes, she's a teacher at the school.
Okay.
And, uh, Dina Falcioli, F-A-L-C-I-O-N-I.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have with respect to emails.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
I, I just have a question for Marie. Marie, I didn't see, where did?
I, I just have a question for Marie. Marie, I didn't see, where did those bid specs come in? I didn't see the.
We got, we got an email that they were in a folder, and I had a hard time accessing the folder. It told me I had to, um, revise, re- renew, update my Dropbox. So I hit the, when I hit the button, it updated it, and then the folder appeared.
Oh, 'cause I, I didn't see mine, that's why I asked.
Yeah, well, that's, I think you have to, I don't think you can access it.
I don't see it either in Dropbox.
Yeah, my Dropbox is outdated.
It has to update.
Okay.
And that's, I couldn't see it otherwise.
Yeah, I'll check that. I think, I think we might have created a, uh, a separate Dropbox, uh, for communication, for, for this, for this project. I'll, I'll check with.
I think, all I had to do was update it, Mike, and then it came, then it, then it appeared.
Okay.
I went into the, um, App Store, and I updated it, and then it appeared, the file came up. And then I, all the bid, I mean, they were all there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit. There's nine responses. I'll check that, uh, tomorrow, uh, with Gina.
I have a question also. In terms of, um, the high school, uh, when are we going to take a look at that, since the board did vote on it? And is it something we're gonna look at after we do the budget, the operating budget, or something we're gonna look at soon? I've had some people ask me that.
We, we don't have any of the information that the board had from Q A and M. But the, the board, in the, if you watch the board meetings, they were gonna put together this whole packet as far as the questions that were asked when they went up to the state, what the answers were, to have some kind of a meeting with us to, to get us all this information, and and, and I, I haven't seen that yet. And I don't know that they've reached out to try and schedule a meeting with that.
Okay, I, I, I have to be honest with you. I have not looked at the video yet, but I did hear, you know, many comments from folks that they did pass it.
Right. I mean, I watched the meeting, but, I mean, even the meeting be prior to that, when, I mean, Rusty was from Q A and M, was at both of them, and gave a lot of information, but they said that they were gonna put together a packet and give us, 'cause they have a lot more information, obviously, than what we do.
But then I would ask Mike, if he can ask Scott to help us out with that, because I think it's important that we deal with that for the year.
Sure, I thi- I think the question is really in, in terms of timing. I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, it's, I mean, at which meeting?
Yeah.
I think what Rose is saying, that we have information we need before we can even do that.
Yeah, so what do, what do you think makes sense with respect to the schedule as, as we've outlined? I mean, we're heading into, uh, next week with the, uh, twenty-first being the hearing date, and then, uh, the, um, twenty, what do we have outlined for the twenty-second, twenty-third?
For budget. I don't think we have enough time to, to act on it by the time we have to finalize the budget next Thursday.
Yeah, we've, we've gotta definitely be sure that we do not rush anything, because there's a lot at stake here, and, you know, and with what else is going on around us, it, it just, we've gotta make sure we take one step at a time before we make the wrong decisions.
I agree. I was just asking the question.
Okay.
That's all I'm doing, is asking a question. When are we gonna look, when are we gonna get the information, and when are we gonna talk about it?
Good question. Okay, any, any, anybody have anything else for the, for this evening? No? Motion to adjourn?
Hello? No, I'm meeting.
Anyone wanna second it?
Second, I'll second.
No one wants to leave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you, stay safe.